A cannabis update from Robert and the RFP for the excavator, sidewalk plow, the trench boxes and sand screening, some solid waste changes for some public works updates, a quick little review of the general September agenda items. Again, we're trying to stick, keep a lot packed in here, but you know, this is meant really to, you know, in the inception stage, if there's some things, big red flags that people have, hey, I want to move this forward, hey, I want to change things, that way our city council meetings can be a little more clipped into the facts at hand and so we can better prepare what councillors have issues with, so, and for the public to have a little bit more on the ground floor of what's going forward. And maybe there's pieces in here where council, we can kind of start reading the tea leaves, like, we want nothing to do with this, this concept of this piece, or you're in the totally wrong direction, we could say that this isn't September worthy, maybe it's not October even, you know, ever worthy, so, but we're trying to get through a lot, we have a lot going on, and hopefully it can help increase the quality of the city council meetings and the agendas and aligning on priorities. Anything else before we kick it over to Jason? Awesome. Over to Jason.
So, we will be asking the council to approve a project that will purchase the city's streetlights from Versant, we currently lease streetlights from Versant, and replace them with new LED fixtures that are dark sky compliant. I think this is a win-win project. We're currently paying around $135,000 per year to lease our street lighting from Versant. And if we do this project, we will purchase the lighting and upgrade them for $400,000 with an annual savings of $108,000. So, it has a, right now, we pay a lease fee of $135,000, that covers maintenance, electrical usage, everything. After we upgrade, we'll be responsible for maintenance at an estimated $12,000 per year, and the energy usage at an estimated $14,600 per year. So, our post-upgrade annual expenses are about $26,000. The upgrade cost, to include the hardware installation and controls, would be the $400,000. We've looked at, we would need to finance that amount, so I've looked at a couple of options, including the van bond cycle and also municipal lease. And we haven't had a chance to talk about all the financing yet, so I don't know which will be coming your way, but one option is a municipal lease, it'd be a seven-year lease with an annual payment of $65,000. So, our annual expenses post-upgrade, including the lease payment, would be $92,000 versus $135 now.
What do you mean by lease payment, Jason?
For the light, for the light purchase, for the new lights.
So, the debt payment?
The debt payment, the lease payment, debt payment. So, this is a, this is a municipal lease, which has a non-appropriation clause, so it's a true municipal lease, meaning there's no obligation to the lease after the first year, so it doesn't affect the city's debt rating, because it doesn't obligate any future councils to the, to the lease. It'd be pretty silly not to, to do it, but you don't, you don't have to. So, it's, it's budgeted year to year, and at any particular year, the council could choose not to fund it. The bank would assume ownership, assume ownership of the lighting and you'd be done with it, but I assume the council would never do that, but it's a straightforward lease, it's a, we had a good rate quoted, I think, at 4.98, no, 4.98% for the seven-year term at the $400,000. It's a, it's a four, not to exceed $400,000. The proposals that we received were about, were for around $385,000 upgrade, but the exact cost wouldn't be known until after they do an audit on the existing street lighting. So, I'm asking, I would be asking for a $400,000 not to exceed. We did issue RFPs, or put out an RFP and received two proposals back, one from RTE Energy and one from Tanco Lighting. Both are great proposals, and we scored them internally, and the RTE proposal was the one that we chose. Very close, it was the, out of 40 points, RTE had 37, and Tanco had 34 and a half, so very close, but the RTE proposal, they had a lot more Maine experience, they've done 49 projects in Maine, many of them with Versant. Tanco has only done two projects with Versant. RTE has an employee who lives in the state, Tanco does not, and the RTE proposal was the lesser expense of the two, so. But I feel like it's a win-win, I mean, we're saving money, new lights, we get to pick the lighting type, the lighting color, you know, color temperature, so it's a pretty straightforward project. It sounds like a lot of money, but it's really, you, the cash, they, they say, simple return or simple payback is about three and a half years, but with the lease payment factored in, your cash flow break even is about seven years. The lights come with a 10-year warranty, so your cash flow positive before the warranty is even run out on these, so.
Are the current lights that we have dark sky compliant?
I know.
Okay.
Most, we have a mix, or Versant's already started replacing some with their own LEDs, and I don't know for sure if their LEDs are dark sky compliant or not, but the old high-pressure sodium bulbs are definitely not, so. And to be clear, this is for the streetlights that are on utility poles, these aren't for, like, the lighting downtown, although as part of our RFP, we requested them to evaluate the city-owned lighting, but it wouldn't include upgrading it at this point, but they would give us their opinion on what we could do with those, so.
Jason, you mentioned the $108,000 per year savings, is that on the cost of the utility, because there's the hardware and then there's the utility?
So, the, the vendors like to quote that simple savings figure, so that figure kind of ignores the debt to purchase the new lights and whatnot, so the 108 is just factoring, if you took out the, the existing lights and dropped in the new lights, our annual expenses for operating and maintaining those, is $108,000 per year less. So, you have to factor in the debt, you have to spend the money to save the money.
Okay.
So, we would have to borrow $400,000 to do that, but because the savings are so great annually, right off the bat, you can cash flow that, even in the current budget here.
Okay, thank you.
And it's 10-year warranties, so we're financing it for less than the guaranteed life of the equipment?
Yeah, the warranty's 10 years, so you know they'll, you know, they're not going to lease last that long, should be longer. These have dimming ability, so if we dim them at late at night, like after midnight, whatever, that increases life expectancy too, because they're uncooler, so.
How broad of, is it everywhere in Ellsworth where we have streetlights?
Yep.
Oh, wow, so, other than you said Main Street?
It wouldn't be, so it wouldn't be the decorative lighting, like, the High Street has the black posts, and Downtown has the green posts, so none of the decorative lighting or other city-owned lighting, which is Myrick Street and Commerce Park, I think that's all we have, other than the parks and whatever, but.
But pretty much anywhere else?
Anywhere else, and there, there's 500 lights, just so. And they'll, they'll actually go out, so Versant will tell us what they have and how much it'll cost to purchase it, but then this vendor, RTE, would come in and actually verify that data, our inventory, audit it, what type of light it is, how long the arm is, you know, condition, all that, and then through the process, they'll, they'll inventory and build us a GIS database of each lighting location, the asset data, we'll know the serial numbers and everything right in the GIS dataset. So, when a warranty claim comes up, you don't have to go up there and get a serial number, it's already in our, in our database, so.
Do we have the capacity to maintain them currently?
We would work with a contractor to come up with a, probably a flat rate for replacements, so, no, we, we wouldn't do that in-house. You have to be verified by Versant on their approved list, so it's a pretty limited subset of people who can actually go up there and work on it anyway, so, not it.
I wonder if that maintenance cost that we're paying essentially folded into our lease payments to Versant for those are based on an area average, or, like, can there be catastrophic events and now we're, having owned these streetlights, now we're on the hook for, like, big storm replacements, that would be way more than this.
I assume our insurance would cover a situation like that, but I'd have to verify that for sure. We need to get a $1 million liability policy in case we do something to damage Versant's equipment, but I don't know if our regular insurance would cover some type of, you know, a natural event or whatever, but the, the, I don't, the Vers, the, the maintenance costs that we are estimating are based on real terms experience, RTE's experience with historical projects. They estimate $24 per light per year, I think it is, so, yeah, that's probably not assuming any kind of catastrophic event, but they wouldn't be, you could get some tree damage, I think, but outside of that, it should be pretty limited.
That's a good question, maybe just looking.
I'll try and find that answer from MMA to see if they would cover that in this scenario.
Thank you.
Jason, I think it's a win-win, there's not really any downside that I've been able to find, I mean, I keep trying to find one, but it seems like all win-win, so.
And this is on the agenda for September's meeting?
Yes, I did put it, I put a placeholder just in case, and it looks like I'll be able to have everything pulled together, so.
Okay. Sorry, this one. Any other questions for councillors?
What's driving this? What brought this to the city?
We've been kicking this around for several years. What really is driving it is the fact that this wasn't possible until about 10 years ago. The state law changed around 20, I don't know, early 2010s. Before that, only the utilities could own the lights, so if the municipality wanted lights, they had to lease them from the utilities. Law changed, and now it's, you can either continue to lease them like we always have, or you can purchase them. The advantage of purchasing them, as you see, is the, is way cheaper, way less expensive to do that. Also, you get to pick the light, you know, it's kind of your driving, driving the bus at that point, so, that's the real driver, is the fact that it wasn't possible to do this until relatively recently. We've been kicking it around since 2018, and now just getting it done, so.
I was gonna ask, how many complaints do, because most people probably don't understand the relationship between the power company and the city, so they probably call the city to say, my streetlight is doing something weird.
We, we get a few of those that come through us, and we, we usually take the info and fill out the form on Versant's website for them. It's not a lot, I think a lot of people are doing it themselves, or they call Versant themselves. The other nice thing about this system is it actually will tell us if a light is out, it's automatic, it'll tell us if a light is stuck on, enables other smart features, where you can do air quality monitoring, road, road surface temperatures, there's all kinds of things you can do. So, it's a fully smart system with a lot of options, wet water, wastewater monitoring, it does a lot, so, all optional, it doesn't come with any of that upfront, but you just add them on if you want to, so.
Yeah, and also note, there's a fair amount out right now, and I was talking to our fire department on, having some lunch shifts with them, and one person mentioned that, yeah, I mean, obviously they're here during those off-hours, and they see them out all over the place, and one person had been calling to try to get Versant to replace them, and then I talked to Jason about it, he's like, tell them to stop! He's like, every time they replace it with an LED fixture, we're gonna have to buy that one back, and it's much more expensive.
We buy them at net worth value, so a new light, you pay full price for, because it hasn't depreciated, so, any light they're replacing right now, we're paying a lot more for than one that's five, six, seven years old. In fact, it's, to buy the lights from Versant is $127, $120,000 of this project, is just buying the lights from Versant, so.
That we're not gonna use?
No, we're not gonna use, so, there are some LEDs that they're already converted, we will probably retain those and auction them or somehow sell them. They're not gonna match what we purchased, most likely, so we'll, we'll keep the LEDs that are already up there and sell them somehow, but the, the high-pressure sodium bulbs, we have no use for, so.
Steve, to your point, kind of what's driving this, you know, we have a bunch of lights that are out, every time they get replaced, it's gonna eventually cost the city more, or we should just push Versant to replace them all with the new and let Versant keep them, or, well, we still need to replace a lot, and we can do some cost savings, let's swap them out, have a little more command and control. Unfortunately, we can only choose color temperature, we can't do colors, which I thought would be pretty cool, on certain special occasions.
Have to admit, that did occur.
All orange, Halloween.
I can look into it if you want. I'm guessing they cost a lot more.
And also tapping, a great question about maintenance, I know with our IT folks, I would be confused as well, because oftentimes I do see them on bucket trucks fixing streetlights and other things, and wouldn't want them to also be maintaining every single light, which I bet they could do, but from a technical perspective.
We could get approved probably, but I'm not, I have no ambition to do that, no desire, yeah, we'll, we'll contract that up for sure.
Anyone else from the council?
I will say, there's not a lot of banks that do the municipal leasing in Maine, I found two, none of the local banks do it, so the quotes will be coming from southern Maine banks, but unless we do the van bond, we haven't decided, but I think the lease rates are pretty good, so it might, might be nice to have this not affect our debt rating, so, but we'll discuss that on Thursday at our meetings.
Yep, so we'll do a Thursday discussion, I've got insurance looking into on sort of the catastrophic events, some of the financing options, I think we're gonna be pushing the van bond on track, and tanker four, potentially this to October, but we'll see if maybe this goes forward on a municipal lease program at the next meeting, we'll get you updates there, some of the maintenance costs, things we talked about as well, so we'll be a little more prepared for the September meeting.
Great.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Four minutes under, which I think will be helpful for our next conversation on the Moore Center lease update.
Good evening. So, I've been working on updating the Moore Center agreement with Matt Montgomery, the CEO at YMCA. We haven't really gotten far enough along to propose them anything that would have any type of permanence to it, but Matt came to us last week, indicated that, as you guys know, August 31st was the end of the interim lease, the one-year lease extension has expired. The YMCA came to us and proposed that the city assume cost of occupancy, which is basically utilities, and the entities, tenants in the building now would continue offering services that they're currently offering. On a annual average, utilities for the building in total, over 12 months, is about $7,750 per month, but a glass half-full in me is, we're not in heating season, so we're probably looking at more realistically somewhere around five grand per month. Obviously, their cost to operate has skyrocketed, because the negotiation hasn't happened in the last 10 years, 11 years realistically, so their cost to operate is far greater than it was when the original agreement was made. And the other side of it might actually light a fire under us, get us motivated to come to an agreement that has some permanence before we get into December and January, where we're absorbing all those utility costs, if that's the route we want to go.
So, to clarify, the interim lease has expired, and are we, are we just operating under the status quo, or they're saying?
We have a couple of options. We did speak to John Hamer today with Legal. If we really wanted to push it, we could just say, because we haven't come up with a new lease agreement, the old agreement stands, and we could force them to continue to pay the cost of occupancy, which, my two cents, I don't think is really a fair arrangement, because they're soaking a lot of the cost. And then they could just vacate the building, which I don't think they would do, but I think their request, having the city cover the utilities, basically is what we're talking about, I think is a fair request, and if we were to go that route, I think it would kind of demonstrate a little bit of, you know, that we understand the issue, we're doing our due diligence, trying to come to a resolution that's gonna work well for anybody, because obviously the environment has changed, both financially and in the community, with the services they're providing are as important now as they, or more important now than they were 11 years ago, so. So, basically, we can stay with it as it is, assuming that they won't just vacate the building and stop.
Yeah, and there are clauses within the lease on, or the, that require a 60-day vacancy, or vacate notice, and during that time, if they didn't pay some of the other costs, we could further sue them for previous costs, if they didn't pay, there's any other routes, but I think especially considering the childcare components and other pieces, you know, I don't think we're nearly at that point, and, you know, and we are moving quickly towards, towards a new, and this would be a month-to-month arrangement, so if we want to change this on October 1st, we can change either back to the original lease, or to what we're gonna be newly proposing, and that's, that's kind of the new benchmark to go, go towards, but.
That's the, I think the big piece is, it's not locking us into anything in permanence, it's a month-to-month lease, so we can change the conditions every 30 days, and I, we are working towards a more permanent resolution, we have some meetings coming up next week to try to get some numbers together and actually formally present them with something, so.
There are a few questions, but any other councillors?
I'm curious if you have a sense, probably none of the exact numbers, but what that permanent solution might look like, or there's a cost sharing?
It's, so, the algorithm that I'm trying to come up with is looking at percentage of square footage that's allocated to each of the entities there, be it YMCA, which is the largest of them. YMCA, Friends in Action, Ellsworth School District is doing pre-K in there, and then the Ellsworth Community Music Institute, which, they literally have a 250-square-foot room, so they're basically 1% of the footprint. Some of the sticking points are what they're considering to be shared spaces, which they just say, well, nobody uses those. We're talking hallways, stairways, bathrooms, storage closets, that, that accounts to be like 30% of the building, which you really can't say, well, nobody's using 30% of the building, so nobody has to pay for the cost of managing 30% of the building. So, what we're trying to do is figure out what percentage everybody's using of the square footage and distribute the cost of occupancy equitably across the tenants, so.
Square footage cost that you're determining, are you gonna do in comps and, but also with the, the fact that it's a publicly-owned building, that's providing, nonprofits are providing services, trying to, something in there?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're gonna start looking at comps, and right now, I think, obviously, the city's not charging a rent based on square footage to the Y, it's the $1 annually. They're charging Friends in Action a rent based on $6.25 a square foot, which is significantly below any comps anywhere, and they're basically using that to offset costs of utilities or whatnot, and they're providing cleaning services. So, what we're looking at is, what are the costs of utilities, what are the costs to clean, you know, snow removal, garbage removal, HVAC services, maintenance, insurance, like, all that, trying to compile it all. With the quick work that I've done, would be looking at a modest increase to what Friends in Action is paying currently, and if YMCA is saying, I think the number was $146,000 annually that they're losing on the building, and not paying anything out to the city, the number I came up with roughly was around $55,000 or $60,000 that they'd be paying to help offset the cost, so they'd be looking at a significant savings and contributing to what the city would be paying, and, but all those numbers are, at this point, it's, it's too early to really speak too much about it, because nobody's signed off on anything or, or even looked at the, the system, but.
And also note that, you know, obviously, it's a big change to the city managing, operating a building of this size and, and scope, and, you know, we're trying to figure out a lot of those pieces, but Roddy is also gonna be meeting next week with somebody who manages buildings in the private sector on this side, and leases the, and really knows the nitty-gritty of these pieces, so to help us, you know, come to what those arrangements should be, and then we'll kind of come back with the raw numbers on, here's what it's gonna be for us to maintain the building for as best we could, if we wanted to rent it at a market rate, after talking with people who rent these at, these types of facilities, or like facilities at market rates, this is what that would be, this is essentially what, you know, the subsidy of the city for these services would be, and, you know, right now, as we've talked about, the, the cost increase, you know, the other organizations are at 625, and they've been there for a very long time, and electricity costs, the costs go up, and that's on the Y, so, you know, essentially, now that, that 10 years has expired, the Y no longer wants to hold those costs, I totally understand that, I think this is a good faith proposal, as a kind of interim lease arrangement, and to light a fire for us to, you know, we gotta clear the deck on this, and, you know, start giving a service provider lease, I think we talked about a triple-net lease, I was talking to one of those people, it's more of a double-net, because of the, there's no taxes on the nonprofits, so, there's no, we're not gonna get that either, on both ends of this, in terms of sharing the taxes or even receiving them, if this was a private building, generating tax revenue, so, I think it's always, this is not a money-generating project for us, or if the city council chooses it for, to be more so, the, the way to do that is to increase rents on all three of the service providers in that area, and to what level we feel that's comfortable at, so hopefully, we'll have some much better numbers coming up soon to move forward on, but.
And a couple of, a couple of things that I'm trying to include when we get to a more permanent structure is to very clearly define the types of organizations that could rent or be tenants in that space, making sure that they align with the community services that we're looking to provide, whether it be educational, or childcare, or arts, or culture, or music, or whatever it is. I think building a document that dictates who can take advantage of this discounted rate, because at the end of the day, we're just looking to cover the cost of owning the building. The other thing I'd like to, that I'm trying to accomplish is getting the tenants to cover 100% of the cost, understanding that there are three spaces that are very seldomly used, and kind of putting some motivation in them to actively rent those spaces, so that it will drive down their cost month to month, because at the end of the day, we're not looking at charging a price per square foot, we're looking at charging a percentage of the monthly cost of occupancy based on your percentage of a square foot that you're allocated. So, there isn't like, oh, well, I can't tell you, like, right now, this is what you're gonna pay me annually, it's gonna be, this is the utility bill, plus the garbage removal, plus the everything, and it's gonna be reflected, every 30 days, we get invoices, you pay a percentage of that cost of occupancy, so it's not gonna be based on a fixed rate, it's truly gonna be, you're covering what it costs to own this building for the month and be here. And then hopefully that motivates them to aggressively rent those spaces, they can rent and drive down their own cost.
And Roddy and I were going through some of the spreadsheets on these numbers today, and, you know, we'll also be including, of course, the debt service piece, which is, sure, this is what it's costing us now, but it's also costing us, I always mess this up, I think it's $250,000 a year, $27,000 a month, but I always.
Just under $27,000 a month.
So, that's, you know, I don't think we can necessarily consider that, that was obligated by, you know, to renovate the building, but it's still a cost of that building to us, and then there's the second piece of this is, which is, it is a very old building, and Roddy and I have been talking about too, I know the school just did this TELP, this tax exempt lease program, to create energy efficiency over there, it's a propane heated building at present, so this is not likely the most energy-efficient capital asset that we own, so that 200 and some odd thousand, $27,000 a month is, you know, for the previous renovations, which I think is around the 2014 timeframe, you know, we also have a capital improvement planning project, which the deputy city manager is leading, I think in two weeks, we have our kickoff with a consultant that's doing kind of a holistic assessment of all our assets, and this will be another big one, we have to not just cost out what the previous debt service I'm paying for these things, what the city's ownership and taking care of the building is gonna be going forward, what the income that we're gonna receive from the three, you know, service providers, and, you know, potential small amount of rents that we could get from additional community service, but also future capital investments that the city's gonna have to make in this building, so we can, you know, have some brass tacks, those conversations about, you know, what the future costs of this building to provide this, you know, very important community service for childcare, for music, for, for our senior citizens is gonna cost, it's, you know, that's, that is our, our obligation to provide those, that data, so we can make good informed decisions about how we move forward.
Well, I like the goal of covering the cost of the building to the city in a way, you know, as much as keeping it at a cost where we can, these nonprofits can operate sustainably, and I think, it sounds like, in my opinion, you guys are headed in the right direction with that, and thanks for the efforts that will be undertaken.
I have one clarifying question, so, we're gonna start paying the utilities this month, starting in September, but is the Y going to be collecting the rents and keeping that money for the time being until there is a new lease negotiated, and that is for them to open and run the facility as they are, right?
That is totally up to you guys, if you wanna say, we wanna collect the rent, right now, the monthly rent that they collect is, I believe- collect is, I believe, around $1,600 a month. So it's not really.
And they're still cleaning the building, they're still providing the programming, so it's, it's, you know.
Yeah.
This isn't the utilities aspect, and the occupancy fees aren't the whole piece, so.
So they're like, their average utility bill is $7,500 a month, and they're collecting $1,600 in rent from a tenant. Obviously, they bring in money for their programming, but if you look at what they're collecting from other people who are using the space like they are, they're really not collecting anything.
And again, going with two more of a month-to-month, this isn't the final arrangement. It's just, you know, as I've said before, that the longer the city waits and just kind of keeps the current arrangement, the better financially I think it is for the city, but also that's worse for the YMCA, so I can see why they're bored and others are looking for a little more mechanism to, you know, put a, light a fire in the city, myself included, to get this over the line.
Any other councillors?
I don't believe we should be taking on the utilities until we sort this thing all out.
Patrick, maybe I'll vote, work with a lawyer and yourself, who's also a lawyer, on if this comes to council, if we have to figure this out, and then put an emergency meeting on for a contract change for a vote, if it's, or if it's like a ratification post-signing, depending on, we need to put pen to paper on this, too. So Roddy, we'll get back to Matt, and we'll kind of go to next steps here.
Yeah, well, if you're able to get it done quickly, we can always tack it on to the October, have an emergency meeting for the October workshop.
Put it in the beginning of the October workshop.
A month.
Okay.
We've got this far in 28 days.
Yeah, exactly. See, what more can you get on the mic?
Yeah.
All right, we'll switch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roddy. We're doing excellent on time right now, 13 minutes ahead, actually. Go to Twila.
We're coaching, so it's by so.
Go to Twila with the TIFF redesign RFP is on.
We just scored today after last month putting out a bid for the second time, the TIFF redesign, the first round back, I guess, before I came on board, didn't receive any responses. And after Charlie and I talked, we, I felt, and Charlie, I think you agreed, that it was, we were not offering enough for the scope of work, it was 15,000, and just looking at what we were hoping to get out of the consultant for that amount of money didn't seem like anyone really would probably get on that. So we upped it quite a bit to 35,000 and put it out again. We received two proposals, and then today, the scoring committee scored them, and we have a top result, and so the course of action, proposed course of action would be to go ahead and award that bid to Reagan LeRochelle is her name, she's an economic development consultant who has done, she has her niche now in TIFF work, and she's done TIFF work in several main municipalities, I believe about six, she has them listed in her proposal. And she actually came in at a little below 35,000, not much below, like 33 or something, but, so she would be doing this over a nine-week period. Weeks one through three would be a comprehensive analysis of the existing districts, then the following week would be, she would come and give a little TIFF 101 to anyone from the community or anyone who wants, I mean, she does this for municipalities now, to councillors and to elected officials, and then open it up for community discussion. Then weeks five and six would be collecting strategic recommendations, seven and eight, financial modeling and projections, which is really important for the redesign and review of our existing TIFFs. Are they actually capturing what, are they, do we, do we need to extend them or change the boundaries? Are they really doing what they were intended to do years ago when they were created? And then she'll spend a week looking at regulatory compliance, which is also very important for us, to protect us, make sure that we're compliant with the state. And then the final week would be a presentation to you all and any questions that you would have. So I felt her, I mean, the scoring team, it all, it was very clear, out of the two, out of 500 possible points, the other proposal came in at an average of 290, and hers came in at an average of 450, so she's, she had a really solid proposal. So the recommendation would be to move forward with awarding that to her.
I know Reagan, she does really good work, so.
Oh, you?
Many years ago, she worked for a law firm that I used to work for, and then she's been, she was a city councillor in Augusta as well, and, yeah, she's very sharp.
Yeah, I was happy to receive it from her, she's done good work. I guess the other thing would be, because it went from 15 to 35, the 15 was approved, the 35 would come from TIFF funds. I don't know if, if that needs to be, I'm not sure of the process, is there about making sure that?
Yeah, I think we have, you know, it's within the budgetary authority to transfer between line to line, we have pretty significant funding in the professional services category already also allocated with, so it might be a little less than we spend on signage from economic development TIFF in the near term. To me, this is, you know, we have the project management team meetings, the TIFF redesign has tier one plus 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 on it, because we had, you know, a pretty substantial amount of debt service fall off on, I think it was the, at the Bayside Road, the, what's the one that connects up to it and off of?
Beachland.
Beach, Beachland Road, I think 250,000 or so, and there's one other piece of debt service, so now there's, the way the TIFF's currently designed, we could reallocate that funding to, you know, branding, marketing, websites, you know, events, we could, I guess, have George Strait come out here and have a concert one time only, but that's not for the highest economic development use. I have my own ideas on potentially, you know, we have some road projects that we need to fund, it just, debt service just fell off a road project, I'm already looking to next year, we have the seven-year bond that we put out, it's going to put 350-odd thousand into next year's cycle that's already committed to pay for road projects which have already happened. So, you know, helping to lessen the impact of that debt service, I think there's a sense making to kind of reallocate that in some areas. There's also that TIFF districts have increased in value fairly substantially. Obviously, there's $600 million increase in valuation from 1 billion to 1.6 billion by the state. Those TIFF districts have had a pretty big increase in valuations, they're kicking off a lot more funding each year. And, you know, when you review the previous TIFFs, you can tell every five or six years, they were, you know, back to the late 90s, they were redesigning how this would work, they were looking at the projections work, they were, and like a lot of things, in about 2015, 2016, you know, that stops happening. So before we, you know, spend TIFF funds that are allocating more because of a debt service fall off, this is a good time to reanalyze our TIFF districts. There's also mention of a downtown portage district for recommendation in our current TIFFs that could free up this funding to be used for the downtown. We have a new parks and rec department, you know, the current TIFF allows us to buy public works types, materials to do silo plowing up in Myer Street, and if there was a bunch of development up there, that's kind of what this TIFF was designed, but we don't need a bunch of public works materials up there. We might need more, you know, this could be a parks and rec or parks funding, equipment funding for, you know, things we're doing in our parks and rec department that are needed doing as well. So really excited to figure out the best use of this funding going forward. And, you know, to Steve's point, too, I know there's, we'll talk to the state on this, on the other side of the argument, on, you know, getting rid of the TIFFs altogether. They've been with the city for 25 years, I don't think that's, you know, the way we should go forward, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't talk about it, and I think it would be, you know, potential jeopardizing future revenue sharing and some other pieces, but.
Well, to that point, Charlie, with Reagan coming in and her doing her TIFF 101, I think that would be, maybe we could ask her, hey, could you explore that, what does the get rid of all TIFFs option look like as far as, how does that reallocate? You know, that, you know, because it, suddenly, all those, we've, you know, kind of froze all the assessed values of those properties and getting rid of those TIFFs, then suddenly they're going to be taxed at the higher value and instead of, and they will lose their shelter from the state and the county.
Right.
But it also, you know, makes it so those funds just go into the general funds, so, you know, so there's, I understand the, you know, but I think being able to have a TIFF 101, because it is a weird, wonky thing, for the council and the public to get our heads wrapped around it so we can start to better understand the benefits or costs potentially. And you said that was earlier on in the process with Reagan?
Yeah, I think it was week four, because the first three weeks.
Getting up to speed and all that, yeah. So, yeah, so I think maybe when we make that one, make sure that it's as well advertised as possible and encourage anyone to come learn about TIFFs, which are super fun.
Yeah.
It's the one substantial economic development tool we have, the municipal level.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as I mentioned in the previous conversation, you can see what, I think it's Belfast has been doing at a pretty rapid clip, with I think they have two new credit enhancement agreements that have spurred additional housing development. So, you know, there's pieces like that, too. Sure, we could use it on infrastructure projects, but if, you know, housing is a big priority for us and we feel like it could spur hundreds of units that people can afford to live here better, you know, that's a use, too. But those credit enhancement agreements reduce future tax revenues for housing, so we're already getting a little bit of housing without some of those credit enhancement agreements. All good conversations to start having. And Roddy's got some expertise, too, here, he, up in Carabasas Valley, they established their first TIFF, I think, recently, and it's already kicking off a fair amount of funding for some interesting things, so interesting to bring his expertise to bear here, too.
Any other, sorry, any other comments or questions from the council?
I tried, Twila.
Now you may retreat from the hot seat. Thank you.
And now we have cannabis update from Robert.
So, given you all the latest version, we did, we did add, to Article 7 today, we did add impact fees after some discussion that happened over the weekend.
I don't know what I'm looking at.
Page five.
They may be a little more specific than how we end up using those.
Oh, sorry, Jeff.
However, when we consulted the internet, this is what they said we should probably do. But.
You were walking through, they haven't seen it since the workshop?
Yes, exactly, yes. I was just saying, so after that first workshop, we took the feedback and decided, there were a couple of things that we had talked about. One was limiting it to the High Street corridor, and then there was also some talk, there's a lot of talk about places of worship and that sort of thing, and having setbacks that mirrored the alcohol ordinance. So after some discussion in the office, we decided that the easiest way to take care of that was to use an overlay zone, which is not necessarily a zone, a typical zone that you would have like the residential, like neighborhood zones or rural zone or the commercial zone, even though it mirrors very closely our commercial zone. It allows us to make an overlay where this is, this is where cannabis will be allowed. So it is the current commercial zone plus basically what amounts to, up to Washington Street, which will allow to include the Shaw's Plaza, because that's not part of the commercial zone technically, for whatever reason, even though I think it's basically indistinguishable from the rest of it. Inside that commercial, or inside the cannabis overlay zone, I decided to not have any setbacks from churches, because there, one, there aren't many of them, but if one were to go into the middle of the commercial zone, for instance, that would, with that 500-foot setback, that would really limit where we can put it, where a cannabis store could be if you start having those giant setbacks. So I figured, you know, churches in that area understand they're in the commercial district, that's where we're going to do business. I think those were the, a couple of the really big things that were touched on from those meetings. The other hand that I gave you were, there was some talk at the meeting about what the state of Maine requires for adult-use cannabis, that's in that one page, and then Article 8 is where we have all of our additionals on top of what the state requires. We went away from the merit-based approach and went to, it's just going to end up being a lottery, more or less, where you have, the applicants have to meet a, the set criteria in Article 8, and then everybody that can manage to get their ducks in a row, for as far as Article 8's concerned, goes into the lottery. We went away from the merit-based system because legal counsel said that was a lot harder to hold up in court than a lottery.
Robert, am I missing, I may have just have missed it, odor control.
It is in specialized HVAC for odor control, number five, in the cost component analysis in Article 8.
Sorry, where?
It's in.
Eight, sub-two, so Article 8's application.
Yeah, it's in 13B subsection I, cost component analysis.
Okay.
We're requiring specialized HVAC and odor control.
Okay, great.
It's part of the building design.
And that's part of the cost component analysis to the total value?
Yeah, it's something they have to add to their, to the building, either the new building they build or the one that they refurbish to be, to get into the lottery, they have to have that component.
And so my understanding is 13 saying, hey, you got to invest at least half a million dollars, and then BI is, and has to be within these types of.
Yes, this would be the things they can spend that money on to meet that threshold.
Yeah, so I guess the question I have is, you know, part of this was my idea, you know, with others. I think what the idea is, rather than, it allows us to, you know, anyone that's going to apply to make it through the licensing process shows that they're, this is a serious, you know, it's, you know, going, and they're prepared to make, you know, to make these investments in the property. I guess, you know, we chose $500,000 as an amount. I guess the last thing I would say, if there's anyone, any sources of information about what a typical, you know, store might invest to get some knowledge, you know, to get that sense, and if we get a number that's different than this, we may want to consider.
The, my research said it was, said typically, they didn't have any specific on Maine, but nationwide, I could find data that said it was, the typical investment was around 650,000, so.
Okay.
$500 puts it in the low.
For retail, not for any sort of manufacturing?
No, just for retail. The same with, we can talk about the impact fees in a little bit, but we picked 20,000 for that because that's 1% of what stores are going to make in 2025 remain.
Should we up the minimum investment?
Maybe.
If we're granting a limited monopoly and there's three businesses that want to invest over a million dollars, to me, that's the issue, and you could lower it at a later date. There's nothing that limits that, but if, I think the, let's say you make the threshold 500,000 for this three, you get the applications, and there's seven applications, two are for 2.5 million, and, you know, three are for 555,000. And to Steve's point on the market, if we just let it float, all of that money would have come in as an investment potentially into the city, and by a lottery system, you just left $5 million on the table and new investment in the city. So, to me, that's just for granting a limited monopoly of just three, you know, how do we make the threshold for higher, higher end-type retail investment?
Yeah, I mean, to, in my mind, having an amount that represents what, because at the end of the day, right, we're trying to, we're allowing this use, but we're not, but we're also trying to ensure that, you know, the people that come in for these businesses are. the people that come into, for these businesses are legitimate and are going to, you know, provide as much benefit to the community as we can while acknowledging that, you know, at the end of the day, this is a controlled substance that's being sold. You know, so we're trying to balance that with the fee impacts that go towards public safety and public health and municipal infrastructure enforcement. And then, yeah, so I, I think, that's all to say, if there's a way, we, you know, 650, you know, that there's the number, but I don't know if there's a way to reach out, you know, we can advance this with the planning board, and this number can be amended while the planning board wrestles with this. And if we can get this to the council for October, but it'd be nice to see if there's opportunities to engage with any other main, you know, thinking of like Bangor Brewer, similar-sized municipalities, do you have any data on how much these businesses have been invested? Reaching out to the industry, reaching out to OMP, it's a pretty specific question, and maybe there's some numbers there that might help us get a better sense of what that number would be. But otherwise, I, I think what this is doing is it's ensuring that anyone that makes it into the lottery is at least going to provide a certain amount of value and, and potentially a business that's one that we'd like to see in Ellsworth for a cannabis store.
I think what, what the, the 500,000 or whatever number you decide or we, we place on it, I think that, that takes the subjectivity out of it. They, they have to objectively spend this much money to get into the lottery. It makes, it, it takes our, our legal liabilities down. That's, that's the, that's what I was being told, why we should go in this direction over the merit base. Either way can work, it's just, it just makes it a little easier legally for us.
Yeah, I just think if we could find, if there's any data out there that would, you know, better inform the number we choose, I think that would be helpful to do now, and especially when the council votes in.
This, that 500,000 or maybe 650,000 is pulling from an average. We saw a little bit of this in the discussion we had a month ago with a couple different local and out-of-state owners, but locally operating there was a bit of a rift that emerged, or a notion of a rift that was larger cannabis industry versus small locally-owned, we heard from a couple of each. And I wonder if that average is based on some of those larger industries are coming in and spending, you know, 5 million, and some of the locally-owned ones are only able to do 250,000. And so effectively, we're limiting to those that, that can afford this. And I'm not sure, maybe if you're going to start even a small cannabis shop, you're planning on investing 500,000. But, you know, as like a small business owner, that is a tough number to come by. So, I think we want to be aware if we are sort of actively limiting that, but maybe that's what we want. Maybe it's more important that we bring in that additional investment into the town. I think we got to weigh that, though, with, like, do we want locally-owned smaller businesses? Is that good? Is that useful?
The key is like the established operator on these pieces is, is, you know, and not getting kind of, you know, what you've seen in some of the other. It's, I wonder about the averages of how those tails work, right? Is it, is it the big players that are stretching it up, or is it the smaller players that, like, you've all gone north when you see those little, basically, you know, rental trailers that have been, so those things could drag an average way down. But, you know, if we're granting kind of just a few here, then it would be, you know, an organization that's not going to fail and that has a track record of, you know, being in this very heavily regulated and difficult business being, or a different direction. We don't go in a three, you know, a limited to three monopoly, or we're trying to, really the only thing we get from it is the tax revenues.
Yeah, and this is also, just, you know, this is our first shot at it too. Like, we could see how it goes in a few years, and we may be like, okay, there's room for more, or there's, or whoa, this is, we've got plenty, and then you see turnover and, you know, but I think it's, again, this is our first crack at this, right? So, it's not going to be perfect, and I'm sure we'll make some mistakes, but I think the goal is trying to balance, you know, how many establishments are in town, and what value can we try to encourage that they bring to our community, while acknowledging that, you know, it's a, it's a drug, you know, like alcohol, like all these other things, and how do we balance that impact on the community? So, I think we're, I know these folks have been working pretty hard at trying to, you know, listen to all the counselors, planning boards' crazy ideas and put it into the ordinance.
Yeah, trying to synthesize everybody's interest into something that'll work for the vast majority is not easy, but.
It's an interesting point, though, John, just about, you are kind of limiting, you know, and a small, if somebody is just trying to give it a shot for the first, like a craft brewer, a craft cannabis person, it's like, I've got great ideas, I really want to try, I really want to compete, but actually, the way we've designed this, it's going to be more for your established operator. It's going to already have a more capitalized investment. Now, that's a little bit of a safer bet if the city's granting a limited monopoly to a controlled substance, especially from a federal level, which is still a level-one narcotic or level-three narcotic? I can't remember what it, or level, control, I can't, whatever the federal compliance with this is. But we're not, yeah, we are going to, we're not going to be able to, unless you have a ton of cash, not a ton, but well, a ton.
To piggyback on what Patrick said, if, this does seem to put it towards, you know, the more established, bigger operations, that isn't to say that in a few years, if it really works out really well, we couldn't change how the metrics work and allow more of those smaller shops to come in if it works that well. Or we may figure out it's a nightmare, we don't want anymore. It's hard to say, but.
I think that was the one thing we heard loud and clear from, I think most, just people didn't want a lot. They don't want it to seem like Bangor. When, what was it, 36?
Yeah, there's a lot in Bangor. I'm not sure what the actual number is, but there's a lot.
You know.
And they aren't all adult-use. A lot of them are also dispensaries for medical. But they're, it's, you drive around Bangor, their perception is that they're on every street corner.
So, that would fundamentally change kind of the character of Ellsworth into maybe a brand we're not looking to establish here. So, how do you do that in the right way?
I think the OCP, if they get involved, might push back against some of the fee listings, things that overlap with their purview, like compliance inspections and monitoring, security system monitoring, things.
Yeah, that, that stuff, I guess, the, the stuff that I have outlined and read, it was added today.
Okay.
So, it's, it's still being vetted by legal counsel. But we wanted to go too much and have, be able to pull it back than not have enough and kind of be, you know, in limbo there.
Does that public health and safety program, the money that would, we would collect for that, is that something that we would, our police department would take and use for education? Like, how do we take that money?
I think that, that's still something we have to nail down before the final vote, but that's, this is, this was, you know, the, these components were, were what are most commonly, impact fees are the things that are taken by other municipalities, the most common things that they use this stuff for. Again, we could also always simplify what's in there.
I like that idea. We should have that for alcohol, too.
One other consideration for the impact fees is, I think these are all, you know, public safety and law enforcement. I mean, times three, you know, let's use that number, it's what, $27,000 a year? I mean, that goes, that could go towards a, you know, dare officer, or, you know, like, it's, you know, you know, public safety is one of the biggest ticket items we have as far as municipal budget, so there's support there. Whatever thought is, I believe under impact fees, you can also put it towards recre, like, public parks and recreation, and we could also consider whether there's, you know, if we want, if, you know, as far as public health and safety, community education, youth prevention, and part of that is have, giving kids places to spend time, you know, safe places. And so, and again, this is all, you know, we could consider that as one of the impact fees, and, you know, is there an allocation we want where we're supporting our parks, you know, we're supporting these third spaces that are safe for children, young people to hang out.
Excuse me, I have a couple of questions catching up after missing a meeting on this. Sticking with the impact fees, if we designate it in these subcategories, are we required to then verify that those fees were spent in those ways? Are we adding an administrative burden?
It would, it would, I'm not sure how would, finance would set that up, but it's, it would be on the clerk who takes the money to make sure that it was delivered to finance, and I, I guess they would have to allocate it.
Well, I think to Nancy's.
And then would we have to report back that we did spend it on this breakdown, excuse me, per this ratio?
That would, that's, that's.
Might be a lawyer question.
Yeah, that'd be more of a lawyer question.
Well, there may be, I'm sorry.
No, if you want to stay on that for a moment.
Well, I was just going to say, yeah, there may be a reason then to make this more of like a single broad category, saying public impact, 20,000, it could go towards, you know, because impact fees are set out in state statute. There's certain things that they can go towards, so we could just say, like, they can go to these things, and then the city can have the discretion on.
Yeah, that's, I, I wasn't sure about allocating actual dollar amounts. If we just make it a blanket, it might, it might be a little simpler. But I, like I said, we, we err on the side of too much and then be able to pull it back, but not enough.
So, I'm tossing out the idea, maybe that is too specific and will be overly complicated without adding value. Another question, and, and maybe for next time we see this, there was confusion for me, and I think for others, on what within the draft ordinance is required by the state or mirrors the state versus where we're going beyond. And for me, it's going to be really helpful to be able to see that clearly in the ordinance. And I, I recall we wanted to mirror the state's rules so that if the state changed, we're not left high and dry if we really liked that. But just to be really clear for me as to what, what is mirroring the state, and then what is additional that we're putting in here?
Yeah, that would be Article eight.
Just Article eight? Is everything else mirroring the state?
I'd have to go through and find, to comment, to answer that exactly, but.
I think the answer there is we, we're just, we're not mirroring the state so much as the state is in addition to what's in here, and we're relying on the state to, like, they provided this one pager that, you know, says, okay, in order to get licensed, the state needed a facility plan, controlled entry area, all, all that. So, I, I understand this to be like, in addition to what we have here, here's what the state regulates as well in the cannabis regs. So, we don't have to say, hey, we want, give us commercial-grade locks and the perimeter and limited access doors. Like, that's just for them to, because the way the licensing goes, it goes, you go to the state, get preliminary approval, go to municipality, get local approval, then you go back to the state and get final approval. So, they're, all that's part of the process.
Yeah, it goes, the, and it's all written in here, but they, they have to get, it takes about 90 days. Usually takes a little less, but 90 days is the window that, that the state gives for the conditional approval. And then we have to do, we would have to do our licensing process, and then those, the three that are selected would have to go back to the state and say they did get, they did get their local approval, so then they get their final approvals.
So, are we ensuring that, for instance, our definitions don't create difficulty with state level that they are aligned with?
All, all the, I think the only definitions that weren't, weren't put in there by the lawyer was the one we added for the impact fee. So, I'm, I'm relying on our legal counsel to, to know that for sure.
And the third question is the idea of requiring a certain level of spending. Is there any comparable other use where we do that, and how do we verify that? Are we really going to be checking invoices? I know there's a better way to do it, so how does that? Is there another place where we do this, or, and how do you verify that?
You mean the 500,000? They, it, you know, it could be, we haven't, we haven't fleshed that out exactly, but it would be part of, be part of the application where you say, we're going to put this in, and this is what it costs. It's, it's very similar to what Plenty Board does for, like, their lighting and all that sort of thing. They have to show what they're doing ahead of time, what they're going to do with the building.
Okay, so that process is comparable. Is there anything else, and I'll, I guess, look to the two of you where?
At the state level for, when you need state licenseings for this, and for alcohol, there's questions about good standing.
And that.
But, but it's not a specific dollar amount, investment amount.
So, we are hitting a time boundary in this one. We got some public works.
Financial capacity is a common requirement for land use approvals, and then we're just getting a little more granular here because we're wanting to make sure what's coming in is actually going to, you know, be worth something.
I'm almost certain, not certain, but the answer's probably no. I don't think, I mean, how many times has Ellsworth issued a lottery for something to come in, but we've never.
Or another municipality, it wouldn't necessarily be us, but is, is this a thing?
We do need to move on, but I think the idea is that rather than it going to a lottery where these types of things would be scored, how much, how great is this, is that? This is more of a threshold. Hey, if you want to get through to qualify for the lottery, you got to show us.
Yeah, I like the threshold, and then lottery, if there's more than three, that makes sense. Just trying to understand that portion of it.
I, I would anticipate there'll be more than three that get through. We've had a lot of interest in licenses.
Yeah, we, we do have a few more bites to the apple. This one is, you know, so, planning board's going to come back. We'll get some more information.
We've got Plenty Board tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. So, we'll, we'll keep everybody informed on that discussion as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, cannabis and cars. Those are the two things, this gang, we love to talk about. We're a little behind now, but we'll go to RFPs for the excavator sidewalk plow and trench box with our public works director Mike Garris.
Good evening, everybody. So, just a little update on, trench box is not on. We pulled that. So, we're talking, as far as I understand it, we have a request for bid out for a sidewalk plow. We have a request for bid out for an excavator. We have a request for bid out for a winter sand saw, uh, sand screening. And then you're also coming to talk about changes to the solid waste and transfer station in terms of sticker prices and residential scale usage. So, those are the two things that we're talking about. So, the bids all come in Thursday at 2:00. And so, we don't have any bid results for the excavator, the sidewalk plow, or the winter sand saw. So, those are all out for bid, and we'll, we'll know Thursday, and then we can update the numbers this Sunday.
I have one for the excavator and one for sand screening that came in today.
Good. And then.
But none for side, sidewalk plow?
I know there's at least one coming. Somebody called and asked a question about it. But anyway, usually they, they'll, I would imagine Thursday is when we'll start, we'll see a lot of them start rolling in. Some, I know some will probably hand-deliver them. They won't mail them. So, those are, you know, those will all be coming once we have the final bid results. Those are all things that are approved or in our, you know, operations budget. And then the, you know, the more probably involved pieces, the solid waste, the transfer station changes that we're looking at. And so, I guess we'll start with the sticker change. So, we had recommended during the budget process that we raise the price of trash tickets from $3 to $4. And then we met the solid waste committee twice, and as part of the ongoing research into this, it was suggested that it may be more effective for the city of Ellsworth to move to trash bags, selling the colored trash bags instead of the stickers. And the reason that that came to pass, that that possibility was brought up is because we see several issues with the stickers. One issue that you run into with the stickers is, like, for example, curbside pickup. The curbside guys aren't necessarily checking every bag, see if it has a sticker. If they see that there's a sticker on a bag, then, you know, they're just tossing all the bags in the truck and moving on. We've also had private haulers pick up non-private trash from people because they are new and didn't know the route or whatever the case may be. Also, the stickers, we've seen people tear them in half. Also the stickers, we've seen people tear them in half, put half in one bag, half in another bag. All the things that we've seen is, there's a fifty pound limit on the bag of trash for, one sticker is a fifty pound limit. And so you see people buying the great big contractor bags and stuffing them full of smaller bags of trash. There's no real way to determine if that's a fifty pound bag of trash or if that's an eighty pound bag of trash. And so there's a lot of, we think, missed revenue associated with using stickers. Whereas if you have a colored bag like other communities do, then there's no doubt. Like you can only put so much trash in a thirty-three gallon trash bag. And there's no doubt when it's being brought, picked up on the curb or being brought in that it's, it is what it is. It's a Ellsworth, whatever color we chose, bag. And the proposal right now is, and of course, this is all pending council approval, is to buy one size thirty-three gallon trash bag. And so that's what we can sell to the public.
For four dollars a bag?
For four dollars a bag. Now, the, the offset to that is the bags do cost more than the stickers. So the question that has to be asked is, is the additional revenue that you possibly capture going to colored bags instead of stickers gonna offset the extra money that you're paying for the bags? And so that's hard to determine until you actually do it and see, then you'll be able to see, you know, where the money goes. But it's something for consideration, it's something that was brought up and discussed at length at the solid waste committee meeting. And so, you know, we're bringing it to the council for consideration. If not, then the request is, if, if, if moving to bags is not something the council is interested in, then we would look at just looking for an increase from three dollars to four dollars on stickers. And all this is looking through the lens of the deficit that we have at the transfer station. And although this won't cure that deficit, we start, we need to start making some steps in the right direction to get that operation back to even if possible. And so, yeah.
We addressed the scale pricing, yeah?
Oh, so that's the next thing that I want to talk about.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So that was, that's one initiative.
Great question.
Then we're losing there. But before, but before we leave here.
Yes, so, so that's, right now, I'm just talking about stickers and stickers or bags and then going to a four dollar sticker and/or moving towards bags. So that's the first initiative.
Do we want to pause for a second and get some council feedback on the bags and the kind of information you'd want to know before we make that decision?
As a resident, it makes me sad to not be able to use the contractor bags because I have a lot of trash. But I get the need.
Well, but to build that out, it's, is it volume as well as weight is the problem with trash disposal? I mean, if you had a contractor bag full of cotton balls. It doesn't hit the fifty pounds.
No.
Which is, it's always been the, I, you've seen her house, there's fifty pounds of cotton balls. So why, why is the volume an issue? I, I get why.
Because if you go over the other end of that spectrum where you have.
Kitty litter.
Yeah. People that come to the.
No, I get, and that's the fifty pounds, I totally get it.
There's literally been people that come to the transfer station, it takes two of them to lift the bag up and put it.
I get the fifty pound limit, no, no question. I have three cats. I'm the one who logs the garbage bags out, I understand.
David, do you have, I know you're.
Well, I just want to clarify, what, what, what information do you, are you trying to parse out in answer?
There was just the, the broad question about why volume. I get weight, but if it's a, if it's a contractor bag, because they're more efficient and they weigh less than fifty pounds, I don't understand that. But the, the second part is just getting, trying to get a better sense of what is the cost of the bags?
One of the things that drives that, that we discussed is if we just were to sell fifty pound bags, let's just say we decide we're going to sell the contractor bags at four dollars a piece, whatever the price ends up being. The issue that you run into, that was brought up, not by me, is you have elderly ladies, couples, people that don't produce a lot of trash.
Right.
And they have a fifty, a contractor bag that they're now going to have to fill up. They don't have to, but they're wasting their money if they don't fill it up. And then having them have to figure out how to move that bag and transfer that bag up to the curb or to bring it to the transfer station.
We can save for, I, I, I want to keep us timely, but the volume versus weight, I totally.
So that's why we went down to the thirty-three gallon. That's one of the reasons we went to the thirty-three gallon bag.
So the other, I just trying to understand what you're talking about for dollars and cents for the people of Ellsworth. Because if I have to pay a little bit more for a bag instead of a tag, but now I don't have to buy bags anymore, that may help with that.
There's an offset there, yes.
So I, at some point, I guess, understanding what the dollar value.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really what it comes down to is we don't know how much of the lost revenue we're going to capture moving to bags. We don't know how much the offset's going to be for people that are buying trash bags that don't have to buy trash bags now, they can just buy the.
How much are the trash bags, the colored trash bags that you're talking about?
Are you talking about for us per pe, per bag or are you talking about what we sell?
I don't know, at some point, I, I think, just a spreadsheet to better understand this. Because there's two goals, you're right, of that, the deficit, it's basically a user fee. But what does it mean for the people who use that option?
So the cheapest, the cheapest bag per bag that we found with the vendors that we've talked to was thirty-six cents a bag.
Okay, thank you, that just gives me something to.
You're going from three dollars to four dollars, decrease that by thirty-six cents. And I think the key that we're all getting at here.
That's what a sticker costs.
And then is, is the, this is the unknown.
Stickers are far less, they're like.
And this, this effort's going to reduce shrink or like, you know, in the private sector, they just, somebody's gonna steal.
It's gonna look great too, all colored.
It's gonna look great, but there's a certain amount, you just had to say people are going to steal this amount. And there's a certain amount of shrink we're losing in the transfer station of people. You know, some are filling them with cotton balls and they're still under their limit and they're trash, they're big trash bags. A lot of them, if you actually weighed every single one, they'd be a fair amount over and you'd have to charge them. And that's a loss every time we take it. We're already losing, I think, around a hun, half a million dollars that the full taxpayer of Ellsworth is paying, regardless of how much trash you use, we're trying to.
I get that, I get the reason for what we're doing.
Yeah, some people are taking two people and loading these contractor bags in to, to carry them, just to move them over the wall. Two people, sometimes a leg, you know, just to get them up over, they're, they're heavy.
So I think the question is, is that thirty-six cents that you're losing reduced the shrink by more than the thirty-six cents that you're not, and that hassle of all these other pieces?
You're right, I'm just, it's all theoretical until I can play with numbers. And that real, that just gives me a sense of it, it's probably a penny or two for a sticker, thirty-six cents for the bag, something like that. Four cents, thank you.
And this one, I don't think is going to be easy to quantify until you do it because trying to figure out how much shrink is, all kinds of.
So then, I mean, it really, it comes down to what is the best process? And is the bag the best process because it's, I want to say cleaner, but as you said, it's very clear cut, it either is or isn't. I, I, I just, I couldn't not guffaw when you said people tear stickers in half to do one-on-one. I mean, it's, anyways.
I have reached out to other transfer stations to see how they charge. And there are a few that have different prices for size bags, but they do a four dollar sticker up to thirty-three gallon or less and an eight dollar sticker if they do use a contractor bag.
Okay, that's, it's good to have the background, I'm glad you guys are doing research.
If you want to use any dog bag, just because you want to get through your stuff quicker, well, you pay eight bucks for it.
Two different colored bags, a big bag, a little bag. We also feel, we, I think we discussed that in the meeting, different sizes, but also discussed how we hadn't up the bat, the sticker fee in a long time.
Yeah. Two thousand.
Two thousand.
Fifteen? Two thousand fifteen, I believe, was the last time we went from two dollars to three dollars.
One dollar at two, two thousand, I think, year two thousand. Then it went to two in twenty fifteen. Or no, one to two, two thousand. And then two to three in twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
So as we roll this out, just having inflation as a reflection of it and the point that it's to cover a deficit, the bill's being paid. It's about who should pay the bill. Before we move on to the dump, can I just say, because I, I am the one who logs the bags out, I'm also the one who goes to the recycle center every single time. The guys that are working there are polite, they're helpful, the place is clean. I don't consider it a hardship to go and dump. And I'm always watching, it's you or it's others who have your, your grabber with people who don't sort and people who throw cardstock. And it's, it's a very professionally run setup and I appreciate it when I go there every other Saturday morning.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I love that, Nancy, that's, been able to get it paid, it's about.
Okay, so.
That is what we're talking about, so.
So that is one initiative that will, maybe the council is whether you would like to move over to bags and then if so, what that transition's going to look like, probably just sell out the stickers that we have in transition to bags. So then the second initiative would be doing away with, not doing away with. So right now, anybody can use the scale. And the scale is not accurate under a hundred pounds. And so when you have a vehicle come in and they're carrying three or four white trash bags and they go over the scale and they dispose of it and then they come back and they get weighed again, they're maybe paying a dollar ten because it's a hundred and ten dollars a ton. And so you just break that down. And the, the scale will only read, the lowest it reads twenty pounds. And then it's, it's in, it's in twenty pound increments, so the next piece up is forty pounds. So then with that same situation, somebody comes in, they get a, they're allowed to have an account and be billed. So they come in, they throw their trash away, their, their cost ends up being a dollar ten, two dollars and twenty cents. And so we're going to send them a hard copy bill of two dollars and twenty cents, which the city is going to lose a significant amount of money sending that out to collect that money. And then if they don't pay that, the late fee is one percent. So we're basically going to send out another notice to them for trying to recover that point zero one one cents late fee. And we're going to spend another however much money on a stamp and an envelope and generating this and so. And thought process, thought process is we would eliminate residential billing for the scale. We'd still allow the commercial customers like Cayman Lumber, people like that to continue to be billed. And then we would put a minimum on the scale of a hundred pounds. So then the other piece of it was also the current ton price that we charge is a hundred and ten dollars a ton. So when you look at that as compared to other municipalities, the lowest one closest to us is a hundred and eighty-five dollars a ton. And then we also have another municipality that's three hundred dollars a ton and another municipality that's four hundred dollars a ton. And we're charging a hundred and ten dollars a ton. And as far as I know, it's never been changed. So before we got the three hundred dollars a ton, four hundred dollars a ton numbers in, the thought process was maybe to go from one ten to a hundred and sixty. But the thought process being that if you go to a hundred and sixty dollars a ton and you have a hundred pound minimum, it'd be eight dollars, which is two fifty pound bags at four dollars a bag. So the numbers kind of work out. So the question for the council is multiple, so. A, are we good to get rid of the residential billing? B, are we good to have a minimum for the scale? And a hundred pounds is what's being recommended. And then C, are we going to increase the per ton price and is one sixty good? Or should we start thinking in bigger numbers since we're well below the averages that we've seen from other towns?
Those are all the nearby transfer stations I just.
So we have.
They're not all nearby, a lot of the nearby smaller towns just have curbside.
Southwest, I think, is in there, it's one at a hundred and eighty-five.
Southwest Harbor is at one eighty-five a ton.
Windsor is at four hundred and Machias is at three hundred.
Southwest Harbor actually does two thousand pounds for free for their residents.
And now a hundred and eighty-five.
Any, any commercial non-resident is a hundred and eighty-five a ton. But their residents get two thousand pounds for free and then a hundred and eighty-five a ton after they run out of their two thousand pounds.
And there's other reasons not to go to Southwest Harbor at various times of the year to drop off your stuff.
See, where they're charging more to non-residents too, we have a lot of non-residents using our transfer station, adding to transportation costs and tonnage and.
Yeah, and that, that, that's important because I found out from an email, a lady called asking if she could set up an account at our transfer station. And she's from Otis because Otis apparently has suspended their transfer station operation. So there's no longer a transfer station operation in Otis. So those people are going to want to figure out somewhere to go.
And the other, like Winter Harbor, their trash pickup is only on Thursday. So if they miss Thursday, then we've had people come up and want to use our transfer station.
Have you guys discussed a non-resident fee?
Very little, I think in the solid waste committee, we brought it up as a.
I mean, the question, the question, the complicating question is we're losing money. So if we're taking other residents, out-of-town residents' stuff, yes, they're going to pay for it. But is what they're paying offsetting what they're delivering to us? Or is it not enough for what they're delivering to us and then we're losing more money?
Well, and not that we're losing it, it's that the property taxpayers are paying.
Yes, exactly.
So, and the rest of us, we're paying it one way or the other.
Yeah, we would be subsidizing, if that's an upside-down equation, we'd be subsidizing out-of-town people to bring in their trash. Because we got to pay the tonnage on the additional trash that goes into our containers that we ship off to Bangor.
In order to know who's a non-resident and resident though, we're going to have to do some sort of dump sticker or check registrations. They're going to have to provide proof that.
If you had a different, if you had a different fee.
If you have a.
Well, as discussed, is there would be a, a higher fee for non-residents. And then that question comes up is, okay, so if you want to charge them, say, five dollars, I don't know, just as an example. How do we identify that they're not?
Then maybe the goal is to make sure that we're getting closer to covering the costs and then it doesn't matter. I mean, the only reason for the differential is that they're not absorbing the loss in their property taxes and the rest of us, the residents do. So if we fix that problem, we don't have that whole other layer of frustration for everybody.
Several hundred thousand dollar deficit. So these two measures, I don't think cure that. There has to be some additional measures, which long-term, we're looking at becoming self-sustaining and getting away from Casella and, you know, possibly, you know, hauling our own stuff to Bangor instead of paying Casella sixty grand a year, whatever we're paying to haul it. And then, you know, we rent two twenty-five a month for each container. So, you know, eliminating that cost and then further, you know, possibly looking at doing our own curbside collection. Because really what you're paying for right now at two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year, right now, in this current contract, is one truck, two days a week to go around and take all the trash and Ellsworth.
And I'm sorry, we are hitting a time boundary, I'm trying to, I think we got a lot more conversation on this one, probably at the next council meeting. And we'll try to dial in some of the math here, to your point, Nancy.
Yeah, just to see.
The resident versus non-resident, maybe the four dollar sticker plus the eight dollar, like monster bag piece, the residential, you know. And, you know, maybe we get to some agreement in this council meeting, but maybe it's, you know, this council meeting is just a little bit more of an in-depth discussion with the other members here who have some expertise here as well that lines us up for an October decision on.
Or even, is it possible for the solid waste committee to come with a recommendation? I would rather, that seems to be the place to go, well, four cents for a ticket and three. Well, $4 for a ticket and $3, it just, that seems to be where that minutia.
We got pretty close in our last meeting, I think.
Yeah.
We just wanted to present all of the.
I know, it's, it's good to understand it and then, but if the, if the solid waste committee comes with a recommendation because they've spent more time with it than we have.
I think that makes a lot of sense. And so, yeah, I think for, we can solid waste when you guys, you know, are ready to bounce stuff off us. Let's meet. I think just, and I agree, let's move on. Thank you. It's helpful. I think the, my understanding of the goal, and I think, and I want to speak for everyone, is we want to basically solid waste operate like an enterprise fund where it's, you know, it's paid for by the people that are using the, the service and it's not subsidized by property taxpayers. The short-term goals to mitigate those costs and there's long-term goals. Right now, we're focused on the short-term goals. It'd be iterative, see how, you know, how far does that get us? And then what's left and how do we get there?
Ideally, the short-term goals can be a step toward the long-term.
Yeah.
And that's why I think the bags are.
And incremental works.
Well, in some ways too, we're, yeah, the, the long-term ones are a little more complicated by the fact that there's like a single provider in a contract, the last one, that exploded. And there wasn't really a way to mitigate that cost. So, how much can we recoup of it through, as an enterprise, without really the ability to control the enterprise that's jacking the fees up on the other side?
That maybe that means it's time to get our own trucks and do it ourselves.
Yeah, and that's maybe the longer-term piece of just a ton of analysis. I know your point, Steve, on when you get into a new business, better know every single darn piece of it. And it might seem good with one piece of paper and 10 line items. That makes a lot of sense, but you get into the nitty-gritty.
You can't beat a guy at his own game.
Yeah, but also you.
Unless there's only one of them.
When you have one bidder, when you have one bidder on a massive contract that has, you have.
And maybe we can beat them. I, I agree. If we're in a market where there are more service providers in this, I think it would be a very different conversation. But that's a conversation for another day and.
Yeah, that's it.
But yeah, I know you guys are working on it and thinking hard. So, yeah, we, we can meet and bring it back to council.
I think we've actually talked about most of the pieces in the agenda. I know, John, you had one item on internet connectivity. I'd love to just ping you up, talk about it offline, just on what your, your expectations are for what we've come with as a team for that one. And, you know, for councils as well. And I think maybe next time I'll try to leave a little more time on, you know, what you'd like to get out of this meeting and maybe we pivot back to the strategy prioritization of some of the larger items, not just for the council meeting, but that we're working towards as, as a group as well. So.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I think it, maybe even if it's like quarterly or something, we, we come back to that. We make sure that, you know, kind of, this is all new, right? And how's, is this working? And also like, you know, you know, where are we going with this? Is this where we want to be going with it? And then broader strategy, because that informs everyone, what does this crazy council want, right?
Yeah.
And so, give you guys some feedback.
Yeah, this one was great for like, these are things that are on the agenda that get some great feedback from council. I think it'll make the next meeting more productive. Also, the YMCA is just a really super timely, important thing that we need to solve. But then having the ability to zoom out a little bit too and some mechanisms for that as well. So, great. Thank you all.
This is great. And thank you all.